Welcome to Conversations That Count, the program that is supported by Fairfax County Republican Committee. Fairfax County Republican Committee is a diverse and open political committee that welcomes people with similar political interests. Please join us as we continue to build a Republican Party in Fairfax County that is inclusive to everyone, including you and me. I am Sri Lee Kapali, Vice Chair of Campaigns and Elections. President Reagan, during a radio address on education, said, "Since the founding of this nation, education and democracy have gone hand in hand. I couldn't agree more. Having a good education is a pathway to success in life. And hence, on this conversations that count, we have decided to bring John Beatty, Loudoun County School Board Member, to openly discuss about our education structure, ask questions and raise few concerns that we, as parents, have in the midst of this pandemic. So feel free to put in any questions that you might have for Mr. Beatty, and I will go ahead and try to discuss as many as we can. Mr. Beatty was born in Portsmouth, Virginia, but grew up in the D.C. metropolitan area. Currently, he lives in a farm between Lovitzville and Waterford with his wife Katie and their five children. John graduated from Virginia Tech with a Bachelor of Science degree in Computer Science and minors in Mathematics and Business, so he sure knows quite a bit about STEM education. John worked at several startups in Northern Virginia, including Comscore and Taxi Magic, focusing on iOS, Android and Ruby on Real software development. Presently, John is the IT Director of the Heights School in Potomac, Maryland. He teaches Computer Science classes, mentors students on independent computer science projects and manages the school's technology needs. In his spare time, John runs an organic vegetable farm, raises sheeps, collects eggs, keeps bees and bakes artisanal breads. That's kind of fascinating for me to know. He's a member of the Waterford Citizens Association, the Loudoun Beekeepers Association and the Waterford Foundation. Out of all of this, and on top of doing all of this, Mr. Beatty was elected to the school board in 2019. And it is my honor and pleasure to invite such an educated man focusing on STEM and also doing a lot of community service and being part of community associations. Welcome, Mr. Beatty.
Thank you so much for having me, and I'm honored to be here, and I hope I can answer many of the questions. I know schools are a huge topic, given the pandemic and everything that's going on. And if I can just be helpful and answer any questions, I'm really grateful to do that.
You're the right candidate to be here. To start off with our first question, I want to introduce my co-host, Vincent Xavier, a very familiar face in Fairfax County. Vincent is a small businessman, he's a State Central Committee member at RPV and a conservative at heart. Vincent, please get on the show.
Thank you, thank you Sri for that introduction. John, that's very impressive resume you got. With all this STEM education and varied interests, and that includes agriculture, I'm really glad that you decided to come on our show, and thank you so much. This is getting aid in Fairfax County. However, Loudoun County Public Schools and FCPS policies pretty much alike, which means the issues are also alike. Hence, precisely, we decided to bring you on board. As you know, we don't have a single school board member currently that represents our point of view within Fairfax County Public Schools. The flow of ideas is richer when there is a discussion of both sides. I tried to get in on the FCPS school board in 2019, but as you know, it's not easy. But vast majority of people vote just based on the color of the sample ballots rather than policy prescriptions of the candidates. I am curious to know, the state of LCPS, do you have folks representing both sides of the aisle? What are the current numbers there? Do you think that different perspectives and representation benefits the parents and student community?
Thank you, Vincent. I would say, the biggest thing with education is it truly is nonpartisan. The school board is designated to be a nonpartisan position by the Virginia State. So it is unfortunate that often you kind of get on one side or the other of a political party. You know, obviously it helps with the election, and at least in Loudoun County, there were seven school board members who were endorsed by the Democratic Party and two members who were endorsed by the Republican Party. And so that's about a seven-two split along partisan lines like that. And it's interesting that in education, I think a lot of issues don't have to be partisan, and I think especially about, you know, getting competitive pay for teachers, opening school buildings where it's needed. There's a lot of things that don't necessarily have to fall on partisan lines. And so I think that's an important thing we need to bring up. It really isn't necessarily a partisan issue. I mean, obviously, there are some issues that get people very excited. But in general, it's definitely, you know, you're representing everyone in the county when you do it.
So when you say seven to two, so there are nine seats, but Democrats endorsed only seven candidates?
Of the seven, yeah, seven on the seat, seven sitting on the board were endorsed by Democrats. So I ran against a Democrat, and then the other member who ran with the Republican endorsement was unopposed, so.
Okay, so there was one seat, at least there was Democrats in the door, somebody?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, that's good to know. So they also have problems finding candidates, it looks like. It's not just a problem that we face, so that's good to know.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing, if anyone's interested in the school board now, is get involved and kind of learn what it takes to be on the school board. Because you know, there is a campaign that starts kind of the year of. So that was 2019 for me and 2018 for you, I'm sure. But you know, you're trying to get involved in a community well before that, so that you understand what's going on, and if you see the need, you know, you can step up and you can help and run and hopefully win.
Yeah, thank you. That's great to know. We have a big Indian population in Leesburg, and as you know, the Indian Americans are very much focused on education. So that'd be wonderful to have some of these people, because of our presence, a lot of Indian Americans will listen to this role. So we can let them know that this is important for us to get involved.
Yeah, 2019, 20, or sorry, 2023 started the day after the 2019 election. I'm very convinced about that. If you're interested in education and you want to help guide the county's direction, it's, you know, honestly, it starts now, not necessarily full-on campaigning, but really thinking about it. Just putting up feelers and getting involved.
Excellent, thank you. Sri, you're muted.
I'm sorry, John, as an extension to that question, what kind of committees are part of school board? And also just surrounding that, because sometimes I feel in order to build up a resume and understand the issues surrounding it, you have to be part of certain committees. What kind of committees are associated with school board that people that are hearing would love if they want to get involved?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what's in Fairfax. In Loudoun, I'm sure that's very similar options. There is, you know, your local schools' parent-teacher association. That's a great way to get involved. Not even, I didn't ever join in a leadership and that, but I would go out to PTA events and I would help volunteer. So if they're having like a bake sale or something, you know, you bring some cookies. You man the booth for a couple hours, you know, just to get a feel for your neighbors in the community and get to know them. So that when you, when you make the crazy decision to run, you know, they know you and they're willing to help you at the beginning. And so that's, that's an easy, great place to start. There are often specific school board committees, so you can reach out to your school board representative and ask to be on those or let them know that if an opportunity arises, you'd love to help them. And so there was a Special Education Advisory Committee in Loudoun County, and that's mandated by Virginia. So this, I'm sure, certainly there's something like that in Fairfax. So things like that, you know, look at the, you can look at the school board agenda and things that have community involvement are great spots to get involved. But even if you're not necessarily in those committees, just, you know, if you've got kids in the school district, getting to know the principal, getting to know the teachers and learning what's important to them, things that they, that their concerns that they see, that you can bring onto a campaign as issues are great, other great starting points.
John, that's very good to know. Let me get on to Virginia SOL results. It is that time of the year where we have kids SOLs. I'm looking at the data, I'm a very data person, even though I'm a healthcare professional, we have been driven to look into outcomes and data. So Loudoun Public Schools have had a significant minority student achievement gap, just like it is happening in Fairfax County. And the achievement gap for blacks and Hispanics compared to whites and Asians is only getting worse. And I was looking at the data since 2006. So first thing, I guess, there are two follow-up questions to that. Why is that happening? And also, you are a math and engineering student, and I noticed that there is also this persistent minority student achievement gap in math especially. Yeah, is it inadequate funding? I think I've attended multiple school board meetings in Fairfax County. The first thing they say is, there is no funding. I don't know, I truly can't believe that there is inadequate funding when more than 50% of our taxes are going into school. Or my question to you is, is it flawed reading instructions? From funding perspective, I also have researched and found that LCPS cost per pupil is about $15,000. So I guess my final question to you would be, how much more money is needed in order to raise this minority reading achievement? And how do you know that more money will solve the problem?
Thank you. I'm not sure more money would solve the problem. I think it goes back to kind of the fundamentals. I think it's making sure that students are studying math at a young age and getting the support they need. Like, one of the issues with math is it's easy to get frustrated. And if you're not getting the support at home perhaps, you're going to need the support at the school to really help you to work through that. Because things like math and science, it just takes a lot of practice. Like, this is why I tell my computer science students is you can't just show up and do an hour or two hours of work. It's really, it's consistent, you know, even if it's 15 minutes a day of practice, working towards it. Because there's often a steep curve, and the only way you're going to overcome that curve is if you just kind of keep working at it. So I think having some kind of system where you're supporting those students and making sure that they're getting the support in the classroom or at home in order to keep up with the work and they're not falling behind and getting discouraged. I think that's a big thing is, I don't think it's changing the lesson plans necessarily. I think it's just making sure that your students are keeping up with the work. And, you know, if they've got questions, bringing that up. So I don't know if it's a funding issue, if that's, which I think, you know, the teachers are doing a great job. I think it's more of a mindset of how we're going to educate these students and make sure that they are keeping up with their assignments and they're not really falling behind when it comes to it.
John, is it fair to say that more parental involvement, a structural parental involvement or just stable family will kind of give the kids the needed routine and structure and discipline to accomplish all the things that you just spoke about?
I think it's an important part. I mean, I'm no social scientist, so I can't speak to that. But looking at some of the research, I've seen it. It definitely helps having the parental involvement at home. And I know that in my classes, having the parents kind of help be on top of the students a little bit and make, you know, not hovering over them and, you know, watching them do their homework. But just being on top of the grades and making sure that they've got a place to work. I think that's crucial, that's maybe not sufficient, but not necessary, but certainly sufficient to help you.
Thank you for those thoughts. I think any parents that are listening probably would, it's kind of highly recommended to have that repeated instructions at home as well. Instead of just thinking that teachers are going to do it all, they can only do so much. So the carryover from teaching environment to home environment really kind of helps in reducing that achievement gap as well. I agree with you on that.
That is exactly what I would say that I was doing. You know, both my kids, you know, went to all the advanced programs and went to UVA, but, you know, graduated in computer science. But when I, when I think about what I was doing, I was not really involved, you know, per se in their homework or whatever, but I had direct link to these teachers. So they know that if they have some problem in the grade, I am sending emails. And when I send emails, they respond to me, and I show them, this is what their response is. And that is pretty much very good enough for them to kind of, you know, keep him in place. You know, there is no specific help or anything in the homework, but just that connection to the teachers, showing up at all the conferences. And, you know, I have had multiple times, teachers telling me that, I wish, you know, we had more parents, you know, like involved like you are. So I think that is the point that we are missing, you know, when we talk about parental involvement. It's not just helping homeworks and stuff, but being committed and being available to communicate with the teachers. But now I wanted to think in, you know, in another direction. I don't know whether you're aware, the Fairfax and Arlington branches of NWA CP sent letters to their school superintendents demanding, as a matter of racial justice, an immediate end to balanced literacy, reading instruction, which uses whole word or sight reading. That, you know, that's where children guess the meaning of the word based on pictures. So these NWA CP branches say that minority children aren't learning reading because reading is not taught correctly. They want structured literacy, which includes intensive phonics instruction and no sight reading. And as a matter of personal observation, I watch all these Asian parents who are really successful in getting their children into advanced programs and doing academically very well, they compensate for what is not available in school system by providing them private tutoring in Kumon's and places like that, where it is more structured literacy with so much emphasis on phonics and so much emphasis on repetitive arithmetic. So I wanted to find out if there is any difference in Fairfax and Loudoun. Does Loudoun use balanced literacy in the regular classroom like Fairfax? Or some element of structured literacy is still in play there?
I would be sight word. My kids were in kindergarten, that we were doing a lot of sight words. And then we've switched some programs, and so they were doing phonics when everything was closed, and it made a big difference. So I can see, I think the phonics approach is a much more humanistic approach, because you're trying to, you're teaching kind of the language rather than sort of the rote memorization, and it gives you a lot more flexibility and freedom to experiment with words. And, you know, you think about language, you know, we grow up hearing it first and reading it second. And so being able to sound out the words is so crucial for you to kind of work through what you're reading and then understand what's trying to be communicated with you. So I'm very sympathetic to the more phonics approach. I think that's a positive change, and I hope that continues to expand.
But what is, what do you see in Loudoun? Is there any movement in the Loudoun School District, you know, to move in that direction or anybody demanding that? What is the school system currently have?
I believe it's the sight words, the structured, I think.
Yeah, I think that is where.
Yeah, I don't know of a movement towards the phonics side at the moment. I know that some parents are, do not, do not like our current reading system. So I think there's definitely a pressure towards some kind of changes and.
I think that is where, I think, you know, when we grow up, we had, you know, of course, in a different language, English is definitely our second language. We had so much of emphasis on that, the word, how it is pronounced. You know, you know, I can't even believe if they were showing me that picture of those words, the basic words that we first studied, like tarra, parra and all that in our local language in India, wouldn't even know what exactly they're talking about, you know. So that emphasis on that phonics, that is so important, in my opinion.
No, I think it goes back to English being a weird kind of amalgamation of so many other languages. But I've been studying Korean, and I know Korean, you know, you can learn the alphabet very quickly, and it's very, it's phonetic. And then it's just a matter of, I mean, I don't know the vocabulary, so I struggle when I hear things. But you can, you can sound out what you're reading, and then you can kind of say, oh, yeah, I know that word, I've heard that. So I, perhaps it's just an artifact of English that people think memorizing words might be a better system to start with. But I think, you know, you just, you start with the basic phonics, and then you learn the exceptions. And I think you progress a lot faster that way, more efficiently.
That's wonderful. My son, my elder son is a student of Korean language, and he's a computer engineer, just like you are. So maybe I'll connect both of you.
So, John, kind of slightly changing the topic here. As I just mentioned, anytime I invite guests, I tend to do a lot of research, not only on the websites, but also trying to understand the policy questions and so on and so forth. Idea is that you came under fire for comments you made in February during an equity training program that was designed to allow participants to better understand concepts of white privilege and implicit bias. Among the elements seen as fueling systematic racism in the school system, I'm not going to spend my time expressing my opinion over this. But I definitely want to understand from your perspective. Can you talk to us more about that issue, and what was the outcome from that?
That was unfortunate political railroading, and I got some emails or share with me from local Democrats in the community that were trying to get me off of the committees and things. I, you know, it was unfortunate, and I was really appreciative of my colleagues on the school board for kind of seeing through the political nature of the whole thing. And so I think it, you know, it's resolved itself as it is right now, so.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that it got resolved. But do you think that's what is called as cancel culture? And I am very thankful to your colleagues. I think as competent as you are, I can't even imagine them thinking about removing you from key committees. Because I think with your resume, you can contribute a lot to any committees that you're part of. So I have to appreciate your colleagues for realizing that sooner than later. But I guess my question is, is that resulting in this cancel culture that we all talk about? Is that, is that just a buzzword, or was that active when you were going through this phase of your life?
Oh, I think it was definitely an element of cancel culture. You take something out of context, and you try to demonize someone. And it, you know, try to make them feel terrible and push them out. And so that was, that was definitely, that was how I interpreted the whole incident.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I think I really wanted to get that over with while we are jumping on to more of the topics about our school choices and so on and so forth.
Well, that's very unfortunate. They tried to get you out of the committees. You know, from what I can see, this STEM situation is the biggest challenge the American education system faces. It's not just Fairfax County or Loudoun County, the entire nation. And when such a promising young man with all these qualifications in STEM decided to take the school, you know, curriculum and school issues as, you know, with seriously like you have done, becoming a school board member, they still want to get you out of that, you know, committees. And I'm really glad, just like Shilika said, that positive thing that happened with your colleagues, without any politics, they understood who you are and they supported you. That's really impressive. Anyway, going back to my question about the structured learning. As I mentioned, you know, a lot of Asian-American parents, you know, we all experience this. We send our children to all these private tutoring, like Kumon's and things like that. But that's where they excel in reading and arithmetic, and that's where they get a head start. So I'm sure private schools have more of that phonics-based and rigor-based teaching. So right now, the African-American community, the Hispanic community, there is so much more acceptance of the concept of charter schools and private and school vouchers in those communities. So if, what do you think about those, you know, those options? Whether public schools should have the monopoly on children's education, or there should be school choice and charter schools? If you are for those options, what specific steps you're willing to advance in your role?
I am, of course, I think, and it isn't just the monopoly aspect, but I think it goes back, we had the founding fathers thought of every state as kind of a laboratory of democracy. And I think you have to think of private schools and charter schools as kind of laboratories of education. A lot of education comes from academic research, and people have ideas, and then they kind of try to implement them in the schools. And if you, if you have a smaller laboratory, where you can actually kind of experiment with innovations and perhaps see if it works, see if it doesn't work, and then you can bring that out to a bigger school system. I think that's a key part of any charter schools, allowing those schools the flexibility to experiment and to try new things. And then, you know, I think that's a, that's a huge component of any charter school system. And I think that's why it's a very symbiotic relationship with the public school. It shouldn't be seen as a negative or something that competes with the school system as a whole. It's just, it's another opportunity for us to look and see how we can best educate kids and find new ways, or rediscover old ways to teach kids.
Oh, that's very nice observation, of course. So basically charter schools do some experiments and come with great ideas, with great results, and public schools learn from it. I really like that concept. So I hear that in Fairfax, they are vehemently opposed to that concept. You know, in whatever way, even state is more open for those ideas, but the county is not. What is the situation in Loudoun? Is that the same situation or Loudoun County is more open for those ideas? What's the current regulation?
In Loudoun, you've got two great charter schools that have been going for a couple of years. The parents love them, and it's, you know, there are opportunities to reuse old school buildings, like local community schools that were no longer being serviced. And, you know, and the parents love them, the kids love them. And I think it's, you know, they can try different things. We also have this academies at Loudoun Initiative that I think is trying to be a similar thing to Thomas Jefferson, but perhaps broader, because it's got technical training, like nursing. They've got a sciences academy, they've got an arts academy. So trying to take sort of the STEM approach of TJ and apply that to a bunch of different fields in order to help students get some variance, you know, in the classroom. So those are, I think, great opportunities to experiment and try different learning techniques.
So those are governor's schools, like TJ, or is it county's?
No, they're not, no. TJ is the governor's school for our county, you know, your county, our county, and our resounding counties. These are just, I think, you know, you think of them supplements that service a different kind of constituency.
Do you have this? Sorry, do you have the issues that you have in TJ, like the selection process is more going into a lottery kind of situation there also, or no?
It's not a lottery, but the Attorney General had an investigation in Loudoun County Schools about the attendance, I'm sorry, the admissions standard. So there is a push to change the mission standards to make it more racially equitable. And so that's, that's something we're taking, you know, it's, they're complaining about groups not getting every representation, and so that is a challenge we're having in Loudoun County.
But nothing has changed so far.
We changed the admission standards, and there's fewer tests and a lower grade point average to apply. And I believe there'll be a committee to interview or to go over the applications, which wasn't there before. No, no lottery like is planned in Fairfax County.
Lottery is the weirdest, the funniest concept I have heard, to select students for the academically advanced program. So I'm glad Loudoun hasn't gone that direction.
But John, just by the way you're talking, we have, we are going through the similar issues in TJ, where meritocracy has been a demon concept. I completely agree with racial equity, but on the same token, I feel like there is no play when it comes to meritocracy, that should never be replaced. As a school board member, did you feel like you got a lot of questions from parents trying to understand from your side or from school board perspective of why meritocracy was considered to be this demon concept?
We got a lot of complaints about it, especially as the vote was coming up. I'm much more in favor of a meritocracy, and I think, you know, being prepared for any rigorous academic curriculum, you know, I don't think it should be race-based. I think it should be just, are you able, are you ready to take the advanced classes? And I think if there's an issue with certain students not getting in, we need to look at, before they even apply, like what do we, how are we preparing them? Are we giving them algebra in middle school? And I know that's a big push to start moving away from having algebra in middle school. And I think that's, that's an unfortunate move. I think we need stronger standards and lower grades, and then, you know, trying to encourage students and trying to help them to reach those standards.
Absolutely, John. I'm talking, I'm thinking about my own daughter when you're talking about algebra. She's in middle school, I would never, I would definitely not call her genius at all. But she's definitely bright in math. I wouldn't say the same thing about her reading ability. But I mean, she's already doing algebra, and she's going to be taking geometry honors. So to take away those things away from a child that is capable of learning is, I think we are just kind of taking kids back to primitive era where we are not letting them kind of survive and thrive and push them slightly harder and so on and so forth. So while we are talking about meritocracy, I'm also going to throw out this buzzword, critical race theory, that everyone is talking about right now. I think for all our viewers, I think at this point, the media has talked, spoken about it so much. I really don't have to elaborate, but from school board perspective or just as a community leader perspective, John, what specific steps you are proposing are willing to advance in your role to fight back on this critical race theory concept? In our educational institutions, and unfortunately, even in government departments, you as a school board member don't have much influence in government departments. But I'm curious to know, what is your role in fighting back against this critical rates theory, especially in our school systems?
Yeah, I think the first thing is we need to let people know exactly what it is and to help them kind of understand it. I know from, for me, it was, it was a learning process. There were certain things I noticed that didn't quite sit right, but I couldn't put my finger on exactly what. From uh for me, it was it was a learning process. Um, there were certain things I noticed that didn't quite sit right, but I couldn't put my finger on exactly what. Uh wasn't wasn't sitting well, um and then, you know, I did some research and and read some books and. Um, I think it it kind of became clear exactly what you're looking at. So, you know, for those at home. And maybe for the the term, maybe I've not had a term, the critical race theory, its nutshell is taking these Marxist ideas of a classful. Um, so you've got an oppressed class and an oppressor class. And then applying race to that and saying there's kind of an oppressed oppressor race and then the oppressed race. Um, and it, you know, it truly is a proxy war for uh class in in this place. So I think being able to kind of see that that when you start making decisions based solely on race um. And trying to to have equal outcomes, I think those are those are key things you can look at and say that that. Looks like some kind of critical race theory. Um, and I I think a lot of people don't quite understand the the ideology and. Um, and so I, you know, just the biggest thing I'm doing right now is is trying to. Help educate to see, you know, call it out where I see it because. Um, the critical race theory is all about calling out what they see as perceived unjust injustices. Um, and you know, it's it's acknowledging that there are terrible things that happen in our country, but I think, you know, we're the best. Um.
I can.
We're the, what is it? The democracy is the worst government, but it's the best one that's been tried so far or something like that. So, you know. You know, no country has is free from any sins or anything like that, but I don't think that's a reason to kind of try to destroy a country or. To to take it down. I mean, I I think the great thing about. Our republic is that we have opportunities to fix things when we see issues and to bring them to light. And I think you can look at a lot of the. There's justice issues that have come across our great history um. That people have fought and died for, people have sacrificed their lives and livelihoods in order to to bring about change, so. You know, that's, I think you got to go through it through the 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 democratic process of bringing ideas, having discussions. And being open to hearing what other people say rather than trying to shut things down or or treat it as as a an ideology that. Um, you know, you can't deviate from at least.
John, you couldn't have said it any better. As I mentioned in the beginning of the conversation. This is uh uh live on Facebook and I have one of our viewer Carly Copeland talking about we need diversity of thoughts. And I know she was referring that to our first uh question about the school board and how many school boards are Democrats or Republicans or independents? But I think that's a great statement to be made. I think, I mean, every country has their own history, right? I could go to India and talk about the civil war and India's independence and who was treated fairly, who was not treated fairly. But at the end of the day, we need to get past that and see how we can help each other and continue to be positively engaged. In the best interest of our children and grandchildren. So I think it's it's very unfortunate that it has become a political issue. Racial justice is something that we are all for, but at what cost is the question. So thank you for clarifying your position on that.
Exactly, Sri. I join you in in uh and John in in mentioning this fact. Uh, we are immigrants to this country and we have faced. Uh, the, you know, whatever the immigrant could face in other countries. I have lived in other countries also before I come here. You know, from India. So as you said, you know, racism and i- i- issues of the past. Uh, there is a lot of baggage people have and it's going to be there, but at the same time, this country is the best. And we both sitting here representing Fairfax County Republican Party and talking to you on behalf of the Republican Party. And having all these positions, State Central Committee and all these, right, there is no other country. I can guarantee you, there is no other country in the world where this is possible. And then when we hear that this country is systematically racist, that's just, it's not just sad, it's just. So, you know, out of place, it's there is no common sense for somebody to say that kind of stuff, so.
First Amendment, I think that's perhaps the the most important part, well, there's many important parts again. That's a terribly important part of the constitution where we can speak our mind and not suffer political consequences for that. I think very. I was, we had a discussion at the lunch table once recently and I I, you know, I I don't know if I could put on on one hand the countries that have that kind of freedom. And perhaps Hong Kong had it, but um, you know, that's been taken away and you see that that they're under um. A lot of pressure now to kind of subdue uh to the Chinese Communist Party and, um, you know, it's really important that we fight for. Our rights to speak our mind and if people want to say this systemic racism, they're totally entitled to say that. And that's a great part of our countries that we can have a discussion about this and we can say, well, you know, maybe there, you know, that there are injustices. Um, but, you know, we don't have to destroy the society in order to fi- to fix those, you know, we can go through the democratic process and we can find. Uh, solutions and and compromises between these, you know, nothing has to be racially charged.
Yeah, and there is a lot of ignorance on the part of these young guys who are promoting this. Because I recently had a conversation with a young guy who is doing some great studies in critical race theory. And he is talking as if all these, you know, he's blaming India, he's blaming America, he's blaming everywhere this has happened. And his history goes back to just five hundred years max, he's saying colonialism is the root cause of all this. I'm saying we have history before that, there is written history. I, do you know that, you know, seventy percent of Julius Caesar's. Slaves were white Germanics and and French people, but he had access to the Africans also. There is no skin color to this. And we have a lot of slave history in in India, in 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 all parts of the world, Arab world. So there is a lot of ignorance also. They're just taking last three hundred, four hundred years and then they they limit kids' ability to think beyond that. Anyway, it's a, it's a large uh thing to start talking about, but uh I want to go back to uh another topic. Um, that is always fresh in my mind when I ran for school board. So this is about the sex education uh a- a- aspects in the county school system. So it's very controversial. The school systems, in my opinion, mislead parents about sex education, also known as family life education. And and for saying this, I have had, you know, issues from the Republican side also, but I'm not changing my opinion. I think there is a lot of uh miscommunication, misleading parents. Saying that it is a preventive program when it all, it has no preventive goals. And its effectiveness in prevention has never been evaluated. Does L C P S track the family life education impact on pregnancy? Alcohol, tobacco and drug use. What is your commitment to making sure? This family life education is indeed family oriented and not promoting sexual activity and promiscuity at young ages?
I think you said it really well. I I don't get any of that information. Um, I, so I don't know if there's any numbers on that. Uh, one challenge is that it comes, you know, this is another reason why the governor's race and the state races are so important this year. Is a lot of this comes from the Virginia Department of Education and local school boards don't have much choice in what gets in there, what's put in there. Um, I think there's a little bit of leeway, but for the most part, this is, this is kind of a statewide thing. Um, and I think that, you know, me as a school owner, right, there's not much I can do. Um, except for, you know, advocate for for changes to it, but I think this is an important issue to talk to to delegate candidates about. And the governor uh candidates about as as we try and 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 win back the house and and Richmond.
Just to give you a a feedback that I have uh found out in my research during my school board run. Maybe maybe L C P S is definitely following the state's standards, but Fairfax has gone beyond that. Uh, there were many things that we objected to in the Fairfax uh F L E curriculum. Uh, there was the state laws where where available, you know, to support what we were demanding. But we have heard from uh the Fairfax authorities that they really wanted to go beyond. What is the state is talking about, just for your information. In Fairfax, it's different from, you know, L C P S.
So, John, I'll kind of take you to parental involvement. I know we spoke in the beginning of this conversation where you said academic achievement gap can be reduced by parental involvement. And I will raise my hand and say absolutely a hundred percent concur with you, John. But one thing that I've noted in F C P S, L C P S is, and I think just in school structures is. They discourage parental involvement and convincing children that they can trust the school system more than their parents. I feel is not a great trend to the foundational natures of family in our society. Without going into any school names or anything, I'll tell you recently, um, we ha- I was asking a teacher about. N J H S program and I literally had to explain to say things that there are a lot of immigrant parents that really did not go to. Education here, they didn't go through middle school or elementary school. So even though you feel like we explained it to your child, your child knows it, don't worry about it. Some parents want to know about it. Somebody like me that have not gone to elementary school here, middle school. Would love to know what those programs are all about. So I I guess my question to you is what will you do as a school board member to convince your colleagues? Or to convince yourself, if you don't believe in that, to stop this trend from growing and repairing the damages already inflicted on the system? About discouraging parental involvement.
Yeah, no, I mean, I ran on my whole policy that I ran on was putting parents first, you know, they're their children's primary educators. And you, the school is really, it's it's delegated authority by the parents, uh so. Any policies that uh remove parental involvement, um try to hide things from parents, I'm I'm not in favor of at all. I, you know, consistently advocate against, um, so I, you're preaching the acquirement aspect and I. I just tried to bring it up that, you know, we got to think about the natural law. I know there was, I forget which policy, but, you know. I was um picking books uh it for classrooms. We had a campaign issue with this diverse books library. Um, and I'm, you know, I'm all for diversity, but these, a lot of these books, some of these books had some kind of pornographic material in them. And it got parents very upset and they really didn't have, you know, they had a kind of an op, a way to appeal it, but it. You know, if they were not happy with that result, there was nothing they could do for it. Um, so it it came down to to speaking on the basis about sort of the natural law that is above all of us that, uh, you know, parents. Are responsible for their kids at the end of the day and, you know, we, you can't take anything away from them and we need to support them in that role as much as possible.
John, I'm glad you said that and also parents that are watching the program, I do want to let you know that my example about N J H is. Once I explained to the teachers my perspective about immigrant parent perspective, that I really didn't go to. Middle school or high school, so I don't understand those programs. But the teacher was extremely open to sharing more information to the parent. So probably there is some parental accountability to explain to the parent, to the teachers too, saying that I really want to be involved. I want to be part of uh P T A committees, I want to be a room parent, just like the way Vincent said, if there were grades. That were not in favorable, just checking with the parents. I think. Uh, as much as uh we ask for parental involvement, I feel like parents. As parents, we can take a little more accountability in explaining to our teachers and educators of why it is important for parents to be involved. Do you think parents are doing that or do you feel like it's easier for us to sit back as parents and say, uh, you do it for us?
I think it's never been easier as a parent to sit back and kind of let someone do it for you and I, you know, that's unfortunate because as parents, you know, I got five kids, as you said, like. It's really important to be involved in your children's life as much as possible and uh if that's, you know, making time to to talk to teachers. To check in with them every day, when we have dinner as a family, we just go around the table and we say, you know, what did you do today? And if it's, you know, sometimes it's kind of rope, but it is interesting, you know. Just showing to your children that you are, you love them and you want to be involved with their lives and you want to know the minute details because. Uh, you know, what is eighty percent of ninety percent of the time, it's it's pretty mundane, but when something big happens, you really want that. That ability for them to come to you and trust you, uh that and, you know, that they can confide in you with. Issues they're having at school and if if there isn't that trust relationship, then, you know, they'll bottle up inside or they'll go to someone else that. Um, may take advantage of the situation and so it's, it's really, really important for for parents to be involved. Um, in just communicating with their kids and and getting, you know, making sure they know what they're up to, who their friends are, things like that.
Absolutely.
When we are on the topic of parental involvement, uh before I go to my next question, I wanted to share some observations that I have. With you, when you have this uh a lot of immigrants coming to our uh society. So the 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 whole culture, when they look from outside, it looks different. So what happens is sometimes even if they wanted to get involved, they're kind of shy about it. So I still remember when my elder son, that is my initial years in the country, was in elementary school. There was a hands-on science program. In the school, so he attended for one year. I think he was in the fourth grade at that time in the in in Echo Elementary School. So next year, the P T A is announcing there is no parent to take ownership of this, so we had to cancel this, but we have. All the help if there is a parent ready to do this with some basic science background. And I'm sitting there, oh my god, I have an engineer, master's degree in engineering, I'm the person who should be raising my hand and do this. And I didn't do it in the first meeting and I go to the next P D A meeting, the the P T A president is again asking, is there anybody who can, you know, who can lead this? And she's looking around and finally, very slowly, I raised my hand, very shy at that time. Oh my god, will these kids will understand my accent and, you know, so what I'm saying is. If it is my situation with a master's degree in engineering, with the, though it is a second language, but still an English speaking person. If I'm shy about being involved in the school, how about this Hispanic uh parents when. They only know Spanish, you know, I mean, uh in, you know, in a, in a talking, uh at a talking level. So they they feel shy about even attending the parental conferences. They feel shy about even attending P D A meetings because they they should, I have spoken, you know, with people while I was running for school board. How do you handle this situation? Because they're really genuine good interest in their children's education, but they just feel shy whether. You're going to be accepting if you talk and they just shy away and I can relate to that, so what do you think?
I think, you know, that's a responsibility who are involved, it's kind of reaching out and, you know, maybe. Uh, if the P T A president can get to know more people better and sort of understand their backgrounds and say. Vincent, you're in a, you're a masters of science and engineering, like, why don't you help out in this situation? I think, you know, that's that's where us trying to really get to know our neighbors better and um and people in our community better, I think that. That's where it's gonna, where it's gonna go, you know, um and that's where you, even if you uh don't feel confident in the language or something like that. You've got the confidence of of knowing that the people are your friends and they'll be able to help you and, you know. They're not going to laugh, they 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 love you as a person and they want you to be around and. Um, you know, I think that's, that's where it's on the responsibility of the organizer body to to reach out and to to try and include people. Um, then another comes down to stand friendship.
And you nailed it when you said that you should know your neighbor and I strongly recommend, you know, even in the Republican circus, I tell people. They're they're lost, how to connect with these immigrants. We allow them, we know that they're doing well, but we don't talk, we don't have that friendship. I say, you know, because they think, you know, they came from somewhere, they think that, you know, you don't like them or whatever, so just go, you know, talk to them and. Have some tea or something to start off. So knowing your neighbor better, I think that is the the most fundamental thing. In 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 immigrant uh in communities that we are missing, uh because immigrants is aligned with only immigrants, which has to change.
I like that you mentioned breaking bread with someone is probably the easiest way to say, oh, why don't you come over some tea, coffee? Here's some cookies, you know, get, and then I didn't, it snowballs from there. I think that's a a really wonderful example to start with.
Exactly. Okay, now going back to our major problem that we are facing now, the school closing. Uh, due to COVID. So, uh, you know, I mean, everywhere in the country, at least there is a good percentage of. Students are back in schools because, uh, you know, the administrations are different. Uh, Republican administrations, they are allowing, you know, Florida, the schools are open for like in week, I mean, ten months now. Um, and Fairfax, we have a terrible situation with schools, I mean, being closed, a lot of depression. Uh, a lot of uh lack of learning because of technical difficulties, so. I feel that it is in local health department that's keeping schools closed anymore. It is National Teachers Association. So parents' educational choices are being limited by federal regulations. Uh, because there is, there's not much of a choice that they have. So as a school board member, what do you think we should do to cut the tape and help our students? Get to school five days a week as soon as possible.
Well, opening schools is one of those few areas where the school board does have a lot of sway over. I mean. In Virginia, we've got the governor's executive order and that, that does set a lot of parameters to work around. But I, you know, I think it comes down to the school board being willing to uh explain to staff that this is something is important and then, you know. You know, put the ball in their hands and say, please, find ways to make this happen, you know, if it's extra classrooms, um if it's moving things around. Uh, if it's mitigation techniques and something, you know, with it, because there, you know, there's many layers of of information and. And you, I think the the National Teachers Associations are definitely. Um, trying to to muddy the waters and to make it sound like it's impossible to come back and. Uh, people are going to die, but you know, I've been at this private school I work at, we've been in the classroom since September and when a, when a couple of cases come, you you handle them. Um, but you know, there's mitigation techniques that are well documented that you can try and and make it work, so it's, it really comes down to willpower. And just sort of set an expectation that in-person education, which is, you know, what the school system is about, that's what's going to. Um, you know, that's the ultimate goal that we're working towards, you know, make it happen. Um, and when there, when there isn't kind of that willpower to push that, then it's easy to say, well, yeah, you know, this is, we're in a tough situation. Um, and so I, I think that's where the the local school board, you know, in their authority to kind of push things and say like, this is the. And say like, this is the priorities for the school district, um within the parameters set by the gov, by the governor. Uh you know, there there aren't too many federally regulations about opening schools and that's why you've got some states that are almost a hundred percent open and then you've got other states where. Things are moving slowly, um and you're kind of at the mercy of the governor in in those situations.
So you you said in Loudon, it's open, uh it was open from September?
No, no, the, I work at a private school in Maryland and. There's a fight with the, with the local health department and we had the governor step in and say like, please, let the private schools open, if it gets bad, you can shut them down, but just, you know, let them start. And it worked great, you know, there was.
Just out of curiosity, I have uh this political question, uh you uh you're working with people who got elected. With the Democrat endorsement and you're a Republican endorsement and as far as I'm, I can tell the common sense is the Republican thought that the schools should start opening. Uh in general, so uh we hear these associations and unions, the teacher associations and teacher unions, they have a. A lot of control, a lot of sway on the people who are democratically aligned, Democratic Party-aligned politicians. Uh even on the school board, so do you think you're you're seeing that as a reason in spite of. Uh common sense dictating otherwise, the politics of the school board members or whatever the the the. Uh affiliations that they have is contributing to this school boards becoming very incapable of making common sense decisions?
Well. Somewhat partisan and bipartisan in terms of trying to open schools, um it was, there was kind of three people, myself. Uh the other Republican and another uh member from the western part, who was endorsed Democrat and. You know, all three of us were in favor of opening schools, trying to find ways to make it work. Um so I don't know, you know, it didn't necessarily fall on partisan lines and some of the changes we made. Um where the whole school board um allowed those changes to happen in terms of setting some metrics. Um actually open up, doing a hybrid in the fall and then starting hybrid back in the spring, so you know. It didn't have to, it didn't, what, didn't, it wasn't certainly partisan, I just think that kind of the the noise um that you're hearing. From loud groups is definitely from the teachers' associations. Um and you know, it's unfortunate because they only represent, you know, at least in Loudoun County, only a third of the teachers, so. You know, they're they're uh very vocal, but it's not necessarily a majority of what the will of the teachers themselves are.
That is another thing that I learned when I ran for school board, I was thinking. Um like back home when I grew up, this union means all the employees under the union are going to be kind of members. Uh and I learned that there's only a small percentage of teachers that members in these associations. So they are not really affiliated, but still they are being pushed by the association, that is totally new to me when I, you know, did some research.
So John, I think you said it very well, right? Where there's a will, there is a way, um as a healthcare professional. I am the first one to admit that there are, uh the COVID is real, we gotta do what we can to mitigate. But that being said, um as healthcare professionals, we were fighting with COVID on frontlines. The day of, the day after, and even till today, and we'll continue to fight it. So there are several mitigation strategies you could put through and also have some safety teams in school. So when cases do come up, you work on them and you implement the strategies that are learning opportunities. But there is a will to make that things happen, but I think what is disappointing to most of our parents in both Fairfax County and Loudoun is. For how long are we going to keep our kids indoor? As you know, the effects of depression, kids falling behind. Several students, especially low-income students not uh feeling supported. Is are are the real issues and I think it's extremely important, school board comes together and makes these uh concrete decisions. Even if they're not politically correct, just have to make the decisions, that's why we elect all of you and put you guys on the pedestal. So you can work hard for us, so.
Yeah, it's really, yeah. It's it's really tough, um and I think the fallout from this, the, just the school closures in last spring. Which I think, you know, made sense because none of us were really sure about it and then. Um the distance learning this year has been certainly challenging for some students, so I, you know, I don't think any of us know what the true fault is gonna be. Of a full year uh that we've, that we've experienced and, uh you know, I think we all have to be very proactive about. If there are issues that are coming up, we really need to to look into what we can do to make up that time if that's possible.
John, I'm 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 sure I'm preaching to the choir, but I think it's very important, school board members also understand that it's not only affecting the students. It's affecting the teachers too, I mean, mo, a lot of teachers, several teachers want to come back. It's extremely challenging on them to juggle between the two days of coming to school and three days of kind of trying to. Virtually teach and go through this hybrid and stuff, it's very challenging on them. And there is, there are certain sect of teachers who are completely against distance learning. There are some sect of stu, teachers that are, that find this entire thing extremely challenging. So I think we uh obviously talk about the students and their effects on education, but I think we forget the fact that this is affecting teachers too. So, so John, go ahead.
I'm I'm glad that Loudon is at least committed as far as we can commit with whatever the governor's executive orders of the word. Hopefully be a hundred percent in person, five days a week next year, and I think that's gonna be great for for all the families.
Absolutely, so um one, one of the thing myself and Vincent are very passionate about is. About our minority communities, right, immigrant population, and also both of us are obviously Asian-Americans. So I I I do want to bring this issue to your attention, I'm sure you're aware of it. Asian-Americans are racially targeted in school admissions due to their academic excellence achieved by hard work and supplementary education. Um I won't deny the fact that there is a supplementary education that's going on for all these Asian-American students. But that's the, just the commitment from the parents to the students, to their kids. So I guess my question to you is, John, what specific steps you would recommend or advance to stop this racial bias? Or preferences in academic selection process? I also want to tell you that my son is at an age now, he's a freshman in college, so I kind of understood the college criteria. Many of these Asian-American students or even Virginia students for that matter, can't even get into Virginia State universities like U V A. And Virginia Tech because they quota system, because of ra- racial quota system. Because they have some quota for international students, so it's kind of a shame that Virginia students should be groomed here. So they can work for in Virginia, they're sent to West Coast for schools. Uh that sent to several different schools in different states and we lose them, right? Because once they go to West Coast, they go to San Francisco to study, they want to live in San Francisco. So I I guess, what what are we going to do as school board member, you guys have a lot of power. In order to stop these preferences in academic selection process, just purely based on race.
Yeah, I mean, first off, I think any quota system based on race is technically illegal by the United States Constitution, so that's the first problem. Any policies that you put in place, the go against it are against the constitution and are, you know, are, I think, are not. Beneficial, um I think the other, the problem comes, um when you're, when you've got metrics that you're measuring. Uh you begin to make decisions based on that and I think because we're, we're taking the metrics of race on everything. We, and that's the only metric we're counting, it's not on. Other things like socioeconomic status necessarily or family status or things like that, then it becomes really easy to to see things uh along the uh the. Axis of race, I think it's, if if there's one thing you could do, I think it would be to stop. Trying to make everything about race and to just focus on on things that are are more important. Um and then, you know, trying to get support for students who aren't living up to or, you know, aren't able to get up to those standards that you've set on. You know, if it's grades or uh other uh metrics that you're trying to measure things on, I think. If you're, if you're gonna look at everything through race, I think you're gonna make poor decisions and judge everything on race and I think that's really what it comes down to.
Uh absolutely, but uh what what's happening, you know, if you look in Fairfax, they're not saying race as a reason. Race is definitely the thing in everybody's mind when they talk this, but when they do the lottery, they made it geography-based lottery. So we're gonna challenge it in the court, you know, because it's geography is not in the constitution, you know, they can do it, right? So how do we, you know, this is the 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 tricks that the politicians play, you know, to. Try whatever and at the same time, we have solutions, we are telling them, okay, if Asian-Americans are doing extremely well. In T J or any of these advanced programs, we are showing them the reasons, this is the root cause. I mean, we are not claiming that, you know, the Asian-Americans are intellectually superior or anything, the Asian-Americans do certain things that. You guys don't do, okay, so what are the Asian-American students getting from that? And that can be replicated in the school system, like the structured learning, uh you know, phonics-based and. So we are showing scientific proof, we are showing solutions, but still they don't want to listen, they want to go ahead and. Push this policy of geography-based lottery, it's a, it's a dilemma that we face, you know, what do we do, I mean, it's just.
Find it and then you try to to change minds about it, because, you know, it's not, it's not good, um. And it's not gonna make things better and it's gonna make things worse because uh you're denying opportunities to students that deserve it and you. Uh maybe putting other students in bad situations where they're not gonna be able to succeed and then that hurts them in the long run too and, you know, I personally, I couldn't read till I was seven and. Um just, you know, if I'd been put back because of that, that may not be here the same way, you know, like people learn at different rates and we have to. You know, not everyone's the same and I think it's important to, to to realize that and to acknowledge differences in everyone, um you know, we've got a common humanity. And we're all United States citizens and, you know, we're all people of this country, uh people of the world and um. But we're all also many differences at the same time.
And we have another dimension to this with the violence that's happening against Asians now and, you know, the the. The liberals blame, you know, Trump for this, but we know that that's not, you know, what we, what we see. There is a definitely, uh you know, this racial discussion, everything about race that is actually making people. Notice the Asian success as a, as something that is not acceptable and then there is violence that's happening in a nation. There is a new dimension, it is dangerous, it's extremely dangerous and leaders are not really showing the leadership. They're just not talking about it, they're just ignoring what's happening and they try to blame the other side for no reason, so.
Was recently published and I read an article about from the author and he pointed out that when you start um accentuating. Race that gets lodged in your head and it's kind of like a semantic contagion of, so everything you see is race-based. And you make, start making decisions on that, so I think that's, um that's, and that goes back to kind of the the critical race theory part that we. And touched on briefly, when you're trying to divide people by into racial buckets, it's not going to. Um create the harmony that everyone thinks it's going to be, it's gonna to divide us into different. Groups and set us apart from each other and I don't think anyone really wants that at the end of the day.
But uh John, I think anybody that is listening to you will appreciate one fact for sure. You you, I think three times you mentioned that, think about the effect the students have. I think we are always worried about uh parents, the teachers, but I think trying to push the students. Uh to advance when they're not ready just because of racial quota system is going to actually demean them. Uh from self-confidence perspective, instead of focusing on getting them where they should be. Why are we pushing them into school, into schools or universities, they're probably not going to excel in them. And we're actually hurting them in the long run, right? So I think you took the time to kind of talk about the impact on the students, which is impressive. Because sometimes I feel the minute you're an elected officer, it becomes more about politics, right? You want to speak right. You want to ensure that you're using the right terminology, but we for, we forget, like in the healthcare world, I always say. Every time there is a dilemma, close your eyes and think what is best for the patient, then everything else falls. Falls through, the same thing as a school board member, I think it's very important that you're like, what is in the best interest of the student? And I think that's what you continue to reinforce and I'm thoroughly impressed by that, thank you for thinking, putting the student at the center of. Every discussion versus politics.
Oh, now talking.
So that's just important, that's one thing I I view public services is, you know, it's not about necessarily about parties, I mean, the parties are a machine. Uh in one sense to help you perhaps get to office, but you know, really, you're, you are the candidate that's running and you're gonna bring the ideas and you're just trying to. Um help people to see, see what your point of view on on those things and, and I think especially in education. You know, it's, you're about teaching and so I think that's why I try to think always about the student when all these such decisions come about.
Thank you.
Now, talking about uh goals of education, um we are immigrants and I come from uh India and I I can tell that, you know, passion. For a certain subject was not the the biggest criteria we have when we select our, you know, area of study. Whether it is engineering or medicine or law or whatever, that's because uh in in societies, in socialist societies, to get a job, you need a degree and. So how can you get the job that has, that is paying the maximum, so achievement was everything about our lives when we started off with our degree. And when you come to America, this is a place you can make whatever you want to make of yourself, sky is the limit. So passion, you know, if you follow your passion, if you, if you're seriously interested in what you're doing, you can be whatever you want to be. So uh this is, this is a dilemma, uh we Asian-Americans face sometimes, sometimes we push our children. Too much into the direction that we are trained to think, you know, the best-paying job out there, so there is, there are different. Uh discussions that that's going on around this topic, whether it's, you know, extreme push for. Getting kids into these academic programs or whatever is actually the purpose of education itself. Or finding your real passion, finding the real person that you are, so what are your thoughts? I wanted, you know, because everybody is going to be listening to this, so as an expert that you have seen education stem. Uh and then you have seen a school board member's life and you see these statistics, what are your thoughts? What should be the goal of education? Is it achievement alone or there are more to it?
This is a very deep question, um as I've, as I've gone through it, I think really it's about um self, especially in America, in the American system. It's about self-government, it's about learning virtues, it's about about learning to work with other people because um. You know, you can specialize in medicine and if you're an unethical doctor, you may end up killing people. You can specialize in law and if you're an unethical lawyer, you may get criminals out of jail or you may put innocent people behind jail. Um or you may cover up uh white-collar crime or something like that. Um so the specialization is important part and I think that's, you know, any job. Um is trying to help perhaps put food on the table for your family, um to help you, you know, serve others. So that's an important part, but at the fundamental level of education, it's really about making sure that that you, you can be a a citizen. In your, your country and you can, you know, um contribute to society and I don't, you know, not economically necessarily, but. In terms of um helping your neighbors, in terms of uh, you know, contributing to the, to the common good or. Res publica, as they say in Latin, you know, the, there's a lot more than just necessarily getting a job. That's an important part of it, but it really is about being, uh learning how to be a self-governed person so that you can. Once you've governed yourself, you can help perhaps govern others and people can trust you to govern them and I, you know, I think that's, that's kind of the. The the thread that I like to pull on in education about.
That's, that's a great point, actually, uh when I was introduced to the honor system, when my kids went to U V A, you know, they come and talk about this. Uh there's a honor court that they're, they have to abide by, I was really impressed, you know, because uh the kids take it very seriously, you know, that's how. Uh you know, they learn to become good citizens without really having too much of a policing, you know, develop that personal responsibility, so. Uh and that is again, that attitude also can get really complicated when you're telling the entire student body that life. Is not at all fair in this country, no matter what you do, you're gonna be, everything about you gonna be decided by this, by your skin color. So that's, that is very, very dangerous thing, you know, more taking this country that honor system that we have. From people's mind, you know, so again, that's a very interesting point that I will definitely keep in mind in my future discussions. And I want to, one additional question, I, in during the, during our research, we came to know that you're interested in uh running for Congress. You can tell whether that is true and if yes, uh your thoughts, you know, what are you going to be um planning in terms of your potential campaign?
Yes, I I found my paperwork, especially I started campaigning April first to make sure I can maximize the quarter, um. Uh yeah, and I think that going back to some of the things we talked about for the being on the school board, there are a lot of local issues that we, that we care about. And they're being driven by national voices and I think I'd like to bring that sort of national, the local perspective to the, to the national stage and kind of advocate for it, I think. Um going back to education and school closures, it's National Teachers Education Associations that are kind of. Setting the the talking points about the impossibility of opening schools. Uh that it's not safe and I, you know, it's unfortunate that that comes to that, I think we need voices that are talking about that. Personally, as someone who's been involved in technology, as a computer science major, working in some startups. I think one of the great things about the computer field is how open it is and how free it is. And I'm really concerned about the push. For a number of big technology companies to try and entrench their interests. And I think, you know, if you, I was telling someone, I think, I think like if you go back to the Microsoft operating system. You know, it was able to, to become huge in an open ecosystem. And then. It kind of lost its way and stumbled and other things took its place in an open ecosystem. And then they saw the changes and now they've got a pretty solid operating system. So I think that's one example of, if you've got. You know, the free market working in that, you can, you can have big companies that compete with each other and you can have small startups that can come. And eat their lunch because they have figured out what the market really wants. And so that's a concern of mine. But I don't know if we're, you know, I know there's, you know, that there's a lot of talk about breaking up big tech and stuff. And I, I just, I'm afraid of. The regulations that get imposed and sort of ossify what a tremendously open and innovative field. And I, that's a, a big concern for mine. And then, you know, I wrote a couple iPhone apps when I was getting out of college because I took an iPhone programming class and I thought I could make it big. And I had a growing family and it would, when I got a big contract to work on my own, I quit my job. And then I tried to find, I tried to figure out how I was going to pay for healthcare. And this was before Obamacare when it got even more expensive. And it was a couple thousand dollars just for myself and this person that was helping me and our families. And I, I think. Anything we can do to help to to keep the, the level of healthcare costs. To keep the healthcare costs down, but keep the level of care, you know, I think that's important. And I, I think the first thing you do is just to. Have more transparency on the prices of of healthcare costs. Because when you get your medical insurance bill and you look at the, the really expensive charges. And then the insurance takes up eighty percent of that and you, or the negotiated prices and then you. You know, they pay the rest of it. So I think there's a lot of ambiguity in that field. And I think if, if you can put some transparency behind it, then you can really let the market. Come in and take over and provide the same kind of, of innovation that it's been providing. At lower cost for everyone at more efficiency. So this is some of the big things I've been thinking about.
That's great to hear because we, these are definitely some points that, that I'm really excited about also for a congressman to kind of pursue. And one thing, especially the big tech problem, I almost, just like you are, I make any of the regulations and stuff. But I still remember in the late nineties when the Microsoft wanted Internet Explorer to be the default. Thing with their, or their computers. They, you know, the government used the antitrust laws to control them. Which was a great thing because that's what promoted all these other companies to come into picture and, and Google and all of them kind of. Getting their fair share in the market. But right now, when this big tech is sitting and stopping us from just posting our opinions. That means they have become irresponsible. This is time to break them up. This is, this is not sustainable, you know, for the long term benefit of the society. So anyway, thank you so much. You know, you have all these priorities that you have identified. But what district is that exactly? Yours is? Which district you're?
I'm in, yeah, so it's Congressman Wexton is the representative right now. With Barbara Comstock's former district, Frank Wolf's former district. And so, well, I mean, we'll see what redistricting brings in December.
So John, while we are coming to the end of it, I'm glad you spoke about your congressional race. And I'm glad one of the issue that you're trying to deal with is healthcare transparency that brightened my day for sure. I live and breathe healthcare on a daily basis so that healthcare transparency is something that I can eloquently speak about. Because we go through the issues day in and day out. So while we're at the end of the call, first thing, let me thank you. You're a Loudoun County School Board Member. I'm sure you felt like, what am I going to do with Fairfax County Republican?
I grew up in Fairfax, my in-laws live in Fairfax, my parents live in Fairfax, I have siblings in Fairfax. So, you know, Fairfax, even though I'm in Loudoun, it's part of my, it's. It's where, you know, it's my home, just as much as Loudoun County is. So, no, I love, you know, it's, it's not, not a problem at all.
Yeah, thank you for saying that. And I think another thing is, as immigrants, we are very close knit community. I was telling Vincent before our conversation started that I'm running a mass vaccination center. And I'm always surprised of how many community members are saying hello to me. That's because immigrants know each other very well. And we have a lot of friends in Fairfax County and Loudoun County. And I, I, I know from them that the issues that we are encountering in Fairfax County. Either are proceeding at Loudoun County or vice versa. And it's a shame that in Fairfax County School Board, we don't have a voice whatsoever. I am grateful that you are part of Loudoun County and you're trying to do as many things as possible. To either curb the critical race theory concepts and to focus on meritocracy. And as a congressional candidate too, you're trying to focus on the right things. So I mean, the discuss, go ahead.
As I say, you do have a voice. I mean, you're a citizen of Fairfax County. You have a representative. I would strongly encourage anyone who's upset with particular policies or happy with the policies, you can always say notes of positive things to your school board member. Representative, you know, let those, you let your elected leaders know. I, I really, truly, I read every email that comes to me. I appreciate the emails. I'm not able to respond to all of them because there's a lot, but I think it's really important for everyone to know that they. They can say something and it may not change, you know, that one particular email may not change someone's mind. But, you know. You never know, it can start, perhaps it's that small little snowball that can start an avalanche. And so I would, I would so strongly encourage everyone to let your representatives know what your thoughts are on particular issues. I appreciate it. I'm sure they all do. So you, you do have a voice, even if you're not necessarily, the representative is on the board is who you voted for.
John, are you, are you at large, are you representing the entire Loudoun or just one district?
I'm just one district. I'm on the western side, the Cattockton District, which is, it starts up in Lovitzville, close to where I live, and then it goes around Leesburg. And that is also going to be redistricted. So I'm, I'm not sure what it'll look like in next year.
Sure. John, as a closing statement, I mean, if you feel like myself and Vincent have missed something very crucial. About your expertise or about your passions as school board member issues, feel free to take thirty seconds or one minute and make that as a closing statement. And we do have some announcements after that.
No, I, I think this was a great conversation. I think it covered everything I hope to. I'm so grateful for you guys having me on. And I'm always happy to shed some light on things and, you know, I, I, I just, there's one thing I could say, the upcoming elections are crucial and. I don't know if it's, if you're still able to be a delegate yet in Fairfax County. I think Loudoun County is closed. But if, you know, get to know the candidates. And make sure that you and your neighbors are all voting. I think that's really so important as. A lot of these local issues, they bubble up or they're, you know, come down from the top. So I think that that's one thing I would leave with is. Make sure that you're, you're getting involved as much as you can in these local races.
Absolutely. Almost all the politics are local.
Exactly. And I'm so glad and so proud of the voters who elected you, you know, for the school board from your district. They have done a, a great job, you know, in having, seeing the talent, the capability, the ability, especially in a STEM deficit. Situation to have a person who has proven himself to be a STEM person. To have that voice on the school board. I'm really thankful for those voters to give Loudoun that gift. And also, when you mentioned about locals, you like also mentioned about the local politics just now. It was my disappointment when I ran for school board. I was campaigning in the Asian, Indian, Chinese communities. But at the same time, when it came to voting, they were really resonating with me on votes and they were really fired up. But when it comes to voting. Again, only the meager ten percent of Asian Americans voted. And I know Loudoun has a lot more Asian American people. And these elections come in o fear, not during president election, not during the congressional elections. So this is the time for me to request the viewers to tell them how important these local races are. You know, most of their money, their taxes are going up crazy. Real estate taxes went up so much this year in Fairfax County. So you're, you know, all your issues that are very important for you, most of them, that happens at the local level. And people have to take these school board runs and the supervisor runs seriously. So if you care for this, if you really like this, I request all the viewers to share this in your communities, with your friends, with your families. We are going to be available, this video is going to be available on Fairfax GOP page on Facebook. So thank you so much for your support in spreading this message.
Thank you so much. I'm going to conclude now. Again, I can't thank John enough for accepting my invitation. In a heartbeat and saying that you wanted to join us. We are very thankful for sharing your views. Viewers, I, I do want to alert you that tomorrow at five PM on Conversations That Count. We have delegate candidate from District Forty, Mr. Harold Pyne. Mr. Pyne is a Korean American. He will be coming around tomorrow at five o'clock and talking about his delegate race. And on April eighteenth, on Sunday, Jason Mieris, Mr. Mieris, who is running for Attorney General. On a Republican platform, will be with us at five PM as well. So I hope you tune in and watch all of us. The delegate, delegate applications have been closed for Fairfax County. So if you are one of those delegates, please do. Go on to the website and take the address. The address is in Springfield. The convention is on May eighth from nine to four PM. I hope you all will actually come in and vote for the right candidate. As John said, voting and electing the right candidate is the key for us to succeed. We do not want our national politic to set a narrative for our local school board or supervisory race or congressional races or our. Governmental races. We want to elect a candidate that we think will represent our values. Thank you all so much for watching and we appreciate your time and hope to see you all very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.